To the Board of Education regular meeting of Monday, May 13th, 2019. Call it all, please.
Mr. Stark.
Here.
Ms. Ennis.
Here.
Ms. Russell.
Here.
Ms. Step.
Here.
Mr. Hagerman. Four members present, one absent.
And he should be moving along. Okay, now if I could have all of our citizens of Muff up in the lineup have the microphone. What's your name?
Spencer.
Grade you're in?
High school.
Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Ennis.
And what do you want to give him for?
A bet.
A bet, okay. All right, now who's your name? Hi, what's your name?
Lily.
What grade are you in?
Kindergarten.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Boone.
And what do you want to do in your program?
Um, in art.
All right.
Not bad.
Which grade are you in?
First.
Who's your teacher?
Mr. Malair.
And what do you want to do in your program?
Being an inventor for electronics.
All right.
Hi.
Hi.
What's your name?
Riley.
Uh, what grade are you in?
Kindergarten.
Uh, who's your teacher?
Ms. Butlerman.
And what do you want to do in your program?
I want to be a police officer.
All right. Hi.
Hi. McKayma.
Uh, what grade are you in?
First.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Frank.
And what would you like to do in your program?
Teacher.
All right.
Hi. What's your name?
Hello.
Uh, what grade are you in?
First.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Butlerman.
And what do you want to do in your program?
I want to be a police officer.
All right. Hi.
Hi. McKayma.
Uh, what grade are you in?
First.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Frank.
And what would you like to do in your program?
Teacher.
All right.
Hi. What's your name?
Hello.
Uh, what grade are you in?
First.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Frank.
And what would you like to do in your program?
Teacher.
All right.
Hi.
What's your name?
Ella.
Uh, what grade are you in?
First.
Who do you want to do in your program?
Christmas.
And what do you want to do in your program?
Teacher.
Okay.
Hi.
Julie.
Uh, what grade are you in?
Last.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Pinko.
And what would you like to do in your program?
Singing.
All right. Hi. Who's your name?
Toby.
And what grade are you in?
Second.
Who's your teacher?
Second.
And what would you like to do in your program?
Singing.
All right. Hi. Who's your name?
Toby.
And what grade are you in?
Second.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Boone.
And what would you like to do in your program?
Artist.
All right. Okay, if everybody can stand and then say the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a long display. I want everybody all set. Go ahead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal. Okay, moving along. Item five, student liaison report.
Um, today we're going to have Nancy Mitchell and Jim Bolata are going to go speak. Jim's going to talk about Camp Invention, this program that we have offered Vermillion for the summer, and Nancy's going to speak about the Boys and Girls Club for the summer. So, Camp Invention.
Do you mean Camp Invention?
You're doing the Boys and Girls Club.
Do we have slides?
Yes.
We have slides, and Nancy's going to be talking about Camp Invention. We're privileged to have it again going on in our district. And June 24th through June 28th for one week. Nancy, come on up, I'm going to show the slides and tell us about the program.
The slides that you're going to see are from the program last year, so you'll recognize several of the children. Uh, we are again fortunate to be able to offer Camp Invention there to the students at Vermillion Elementary, and we have approximately 90 students, grades K through going into sixth. Uh, so we are going to have another great year, and I'm very much looking forward to it. Um, I gave the board members some information. Uh, the first page is a study that was done last year. I'm not sure how many years the data was pulled from. This is a program that's about 25 years old, and I've been involved with it for about 25 years. And so, I started out as an instructor, became an assistant director, and finally became the director. Uh, the video that you're looking at gets sent home to all the parents, and it just is a wrap-up, a 10-minute wrap-up of the week that we spend with the kids. And they are led by high school counselors who learn leadership skills and organization skills and lots of patience as they work with these kids. And we have five wonderful instructors. Uh, three of them are Vermillion instructors, two of them happen to be coaches in the Vermillion District and teachers in different districts. So, we're looking forward to our great team working together again. And this program is the only nationally recognized summer enrichment program in the United States. So, it's a great program, and they've refined it over the years, and I love the focus on inventors now. Um, they've really incorporated inventors into the curriculum and showcased them. And we get to meet through video means many of these inventors and look at their contributions. And this year, our modules are Farm Tech, which they will learn how technology is used now to run farms, and how inventions have made it possible to use soil that was impossible to use before. Um, they are going to do one that is called Invention, Inven- Innovation Force, sorry, Innovation Force, where the inventors are superheroes, and they have to help them catch the plagiarizer and protect their patents. Another one is called DIY Orb- or, yeah, DIY Orbot, where the kids will take apart a remote-controlled robot and see how it works, and then they will each get to take home their own remote-controlled robot at the end of the week. And they'll have challenges that they have to work on in their groups and with their classes. The other one is called Deep Sea Mystery, and we're really excited about this one. Uh, Mrs. Boone and I were talking today, and she said, "I've been reading it over, and I'm so excited." So, she's really looking forward to digging into that. They are going to dig out fossils, they are going to learn about pirates, they are going to make a pirate ship. Um, I can't remember everything that they're going to do in that one, it's a big one. Um, and then the other one, I think Innovation Force, Deep Sea Mystery, Farm Tech, and DIY Orbot, so I got them all. And then one of the other modules we do is just where they invent their own games. And we're going to ask you to send in recyclable items, and you'll say, "What are they going to use that for?" And they use everything, I'm not kidding. And the stuff that they come up with is so incredible. And I don't know if you've seen it yet, there's a video of one of the little kids and this invention that he came up with, and he sat and talked with a bunch of the instructors that were looking at it, telling us what it did, and, um, one of these modules from last year, they had to build a, um, these houses, and they, they were dealing with these techno-houses, where it had the latest technology, and they got to put all kinds of stuff in them. And, um, these were the robots that they got to take home last year, they were light sensor robots. And so, the light sensor would follow the black trail and go around those trails, and they got to decorate them and learn how to use them, and that was a really cool one, too. They, they've come up with, and there's the dogs, if anybody was there last year, you'd probably sick of hearing the dogs bark. I got sick of listening to them in the classroom. There's one of the inventions, and then, um, so we spend a week, and we invent, and we create, and we learn about inventors and their contribution to society. And I love the little boy up here that said he wanted to be inventor, and he needs to come, I don't know if he signed up or not, but he needs to be there because it's right up his alley. Um, I, I think that's it. We have the Boys and Girls Club feed us, which is really wonderful, so the kids don't have to worry about bringing stuff with them. Um, and they spend the day, and we get wet, and we go outside, and we have a great time, and it really is a wonderful experience. And I thank the board and appreciate the board's help in helping us make this another successful year at Vermillion Elementary School. This is our third year, and we love it. Is there still room? Yes, there is.
And where can they, where can parents go to find information on their words somehow?
Um, our scholarship money is all gone. Um, there is, I think, maybe a $15 discount left, but if they go to campinvention.org, that's where you can sign up online, or they can contact me. Um, I'm on Facebook, uh, my, you don't have my email up there? If, if you call the school, they'll get ahold of me, or you can find me on Facebook, and I can get the forms to you that way, or we can figure out another way to do it. We're always looking for parent helpers, and you get a discount if you come in and help us. Um, so there's, there's ways, but yes, there is still openings, we can have up to 110 kids, so. Any other questions? I thank you very much for all of us. We, we do appreciate it, and I can tell you that the kids absolutely love it. I was subbing today at Vermillion, and a little girl came into the room that I was subbing in, I was the music teacher. Stretch, but I didn't. Um, and she brought in a letter for me, and she said, "I'm coming back to Camp Invention this year, and I am so excited, and my mom and I are going to clean my room this weekend and find stuff, take apart stuff to bring in, or recycle stuff to bring in." So, she is all excited. And if you look at the very first page that I gave you, that's the results of the study, and again, it's all things that I could have told you. The kids do better on standardized tests, they're more willing to take risks, they are willing to take on leadership roles, because as they move up through the camp, there's opportunities for them to help or to be a counselor. And I have kids at my Vermillion, Fireman's Camp that have been campers, helpers, counselors, teachers. They have gone all the way up. And I have high school seniors saying, "Can I come back just one more year? Can I come back and be a counselor one more night?" Absolutely. So, I'm hoping to build that here, and like I said, without the donations that we get, especially from the board this time, because I didn't know my work was going to make it work, um, we were able to put together a successful program again this year, and I really do appreciate that.
That's great.
Yeah.
We had some funding, funding titled for aid money came through that we weren't expecting, and it's for student enrichment. So, we felt this is a perfect way to spend some of that money to really enrich the lives of these kids, to help them think differently, and not, it's not, you know, all work, it's really inventing and using their imagination. So, some of the money went for, to subsidize Camp Invention, and some also went for Boys and Girls Club, which I'm going to talk about next. But just so you know some of the facts about it, what is occurring here, um, and it's for children, I'm sorry, this is the Boys and Girls Club I'm going to talk about next. Do you have any questions about Camp Invention? The Boys and Girls Club will be at both schools, the elementary and the middle school. Uh, children that turn six by June 3rd can come. Through the current third graders will be at VES, okay, elementary school. Children currently in grades four through eight will be at Sailor Way Middle School. Boys and Girls Club runs from June 10th through August 9th, from 8:30 to 4:30. It's going to be closed two days, the 4th of July and the 5th of July. Uh, the types of activities they'll be doing, they do academics and reading and math, many physical activities every day, arts and crafts, nutritious breakfast and lunch will be provided, field trips, uh, I know each age level, go swimming, metro parks, nature walks, the Indians game, crushers game, go to the zoo, and splash pad, I guess my spell check changed there, it's supposed to be splash pad, okay? And, um, the Boys and Girls Club received a grant through the Lorraine Department of Jobs and Family Services, and they will be getting applications out very soon at both the elementary and the middle school. Um, there is a cost involved, but not for all kids. There are going to be scholarships made available. But if a child is not going to receive a scholarship, it's usually $200, but that's a pretty good price for all those weeks, for the whole summer, and all those activities, plus food and everything, so it's a good price. And each additional child, $100 in the same family. But there will be scholarships, and that information will be coming out with the applications. And again, some of the money that title for money that we have, we're going to subsidize the families that can't afford, low-income families that can't afford, but want to send their child to the camp. So, all that will be coming out in an application form. Any questions about that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Lisa. And thank you very much. Next to find the agenda, we have the legislative report.
Um, so the one thing I saw that did pass in the Senate is that Senate Bill 26, I had mentioned this previously, I think when they had first started kind of talking about getting it going, um, that's the one that permits the teachers to deduct $250 from their state income taxes for out-of-pocket expenses for classroom supplies, professional development, so that has passed the Senate now, so that's going to be going to the House. Um, House Bill 154 is another one that I had mentioned last time that is now moving on. That's the one that focuses on that, House Bill 70 with the academic distressed commissions and all that, so it looks like, um, that one did pass the House as well, so that one's going to be going to the Senate. That's the one that's kind of repealing what was put in place originally, and looking at kind of changing that, there's new plans for that. Um, and then, House Bill 166, that is one that's focusing on the state operating budget, so it's, um, it makes appropriations for the operating budget. That has also passed in the House, and that one's going out to the Senate now as well.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Okay, item number seven, public participation. The Public Participation Section of the Board of Education's agenda is specifically designed for the public to address the board with their compliments, concerns, and or questions. The board welcomes your comments. If you wish to address the board regarding a problem, the board will grant you two things. First, your comments should be factual and respectful of the rights of others. Second, before coming to the board with a specific problem, you should first address the problem with the appropriate teacher, staff member, or administrator. For your information, the rules of the government board, Public Participation Section of the agenda can be found in the last page of your brochure, Vermillion Local School Board of Education Meet. And we ask that you, if you address the board, just state your name, and, uh, we will take anybody that's like to speak at this time.
You want me to go first?
Come on, you made me read our letter.
Hello, I'm Mike Greenie. The kids asked me this week to come back, they've been asking me in the past month how we were doing, and if we had been making any headway with swimming. Um, on behalf of the kids, I spoke to some of the booster members, and striking up interest with that. Um, I didn't really bring a factual report today like I did last month, uh, this was just more showing how our team's hanging together, and we're growing in size and interest, and, um, there's just, as we say, a lot of scuttle or a lot of talk, and the kids are really hoping that we can make something happen. So, I just, we came back again to see if there are any questions, or if there was anything we could do to help, um, keep or raise interest and make it possibly a sport here for Vermillion, so, I don't know. What's the number that you have, that you had last year again, and what are you projecting that you will have? I, I believe we had 12 kids this year that were participating in the team, and, um, through some of the kids, I mean, I know that they've outreach to at least another five to seven kids for sure that have signed up, so roughly, we feel confident with about 20 kids for sure. And again, there's a lot of kids showing up that are well-interested and, you know, seeing what, what they can do with this sport. So, I, I know that there probably is still more to discuss, or more to think about, or more, but again, I reach out to you, I really, I said last month, well, I'm going to reach out to each of the board members, and sometimes I really don't want to call on you at home, I know this is all, I like other things voluntary and things, but again, if there are any questions that any of you have, you can always reach out to me, I know, and my wife, and, uh, we have, they're, they're really hoping that something can happen. Um, we know that it probably is a long reach to fund 100% of it for three years, but, um, we know that there was something, I know that there's other avenues that we can help and possibly. Is there anyone else that wants to say anything tonight? Cause then.
Hopefully, he's thought about what he has to say.
Um, hi, I'm Ben Renee. Um, I'm a freshman this year, this is my first year swimming for the last high school. I swim competitively now about for eight or nine years, uh, since I was five, actually. And the thing with swimming is, not only is it a great conditioning and thing to do that you can do for your entire life, but the camaraderie that it builds between you and other swimmers, like the beginning of the season, Savannah and Jesse, I hardly knew them, and now, you know, there's some of my friends that I can go and talk to if I need help with anything. And the coach, I've definitely become closer with Coach Dawson and Coach Roberts, and, you know, just the bonds that you can form, um, between people and coaches, I think it's a very beneficial sport to have.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? So, let me just talk on behalf of the board, we anticipated that you were going to come tonight, and we appreciate your persistence, too. And you're right, though, we do have a little bit more work that we've got to do on this. We have been doing some of this, Justin and I have been talking, we've been talking to individual board members, and we, we do need a little bit more time. So, let us work out some final numbers, some final thoughts, and we're anticipating by the next board meetings that we'll definitely be able to make a final decision on it, but we're going to need just another board meeting here to make sure that we're looking at all of the facts, and make sure that we have everything lined up, and we've considered every aspect of this. This is a big decision, because it is one of those sports, as you know, that the participation is limited, we do have other sports like that, but it's a financial consideration. And that's not all of it, though, we do understand that there are a lot of benefits to it. And there's no doubt the things that sports can offer, and I'm going to talk a little bit about some of those things that sports do offer tonight in my report. So, it's a great thing, but we also, that's not the only decision that the board has to think about, is just the fact that we know that it's good for kids, so give us a little bit more time about it, we're taking this very seriously, and we really do admire the fact that you are all coming out here in the evening when I'm sure you'd rather be doing other things, so. Keep practicing, keep working at it, keep being persistent, and we'll give you definitely final consideration.
My name is Maria Jones. The one thing, too, that I don't know if it's as known, but the swim meets bring a lot of people to the meets, so, and there's always a fee to get in, so there is definitely money that can be earned or whatever, but there, when we, any meet that we went to this year, the place was packed, so it definitely brings in a lot of money.
And I believe someone mentioned that if we hosted it, even if it's at a different pool, we would still get some of them more.
Yeah, I believe it's all what we would set up as a group, you know, as you're running a, normally what I understand is, again, um, so you're renting a facility, and therefore you're renting that facility, and you know that other people, sometimes they're at schools, sometimes they're at places like we mentioned over in college, or, so, and we believe that there's that opportunity, those are some of the things, I mean, there were, if there was more input that I, you know, I know that there are some questions like that, that if we had some, if it was just email that I could help figure out, and or, I know that people are probably into it yourselves, too, so, if there's any way I can get you information or things that you want to question and ask, or.
And how, how did the, um, the boosters, uh, were they receptive to the idea?
They were receptive, um, again, we talked to a couple of them, um, in between the weeks, uh, and they were receptive to say, "Well, you know, hopefully that, uh, we know that a commitment has to be made," we, we talked last time that it was, maybe I should stand up. And we talked last time that it might take, you know, you can't do it for 10, 12 years, but maybe we take it in short steps, little steps, three years, and, you know, they can figure out how, um, I didn't want to send any monetary to it, but, you know, they, they said, "Sure, kids showed interest, and, uh, parents are willing to work on their own and do fundraisers, and, and they realize that that's what they're here for, or at least the boosters, they're here to help do that and raise money, and, so, uh, yeah, they were receptive to it." Um, I didn't actually speak to each and every, but I spoke to their spokesperson and a couple others, so it was very receptive. So, at first, you know, when we looked at this, we said, "No, we don't think we can do it," but because of your persistence and the fact that you're coming back, and you're coming with all of the swimmers, and we're definitely considering it, and we're definitely working on it, not to put the athletic director on the spot, but I'm going to. So, one of the questions, and I think it's best to hear maybe from his point of view, we have a limited number of kids in our district, how is this going to impact other sports? Does this hurt our other programs by us adding another? Yeah, that remains to be seen, I mean, it's a concern. Um, anytime you add something else that's in the same genre as athletics, you're potentially thinning the herd. Um, you know, we don't, I guess we won't really know that until, until it happens, if it does happen. I, I guess another way to look at it, though, to talk about what you just said, we always have the philosophy that kids should play multiple sports and try multiple things, and as you know, you can't get a letter in your sport now, but if we did add it as a team, then you could, and that would be one of those things that you could get multiple letters in multiple sports. And one of the things that we always do encourage the kids is that, don't just concentrate on one sport, because the chances of you being a professional in that, you know, we know the odds of that are not very good, so, not that you can't, it's possible to do, but. For sure, yeah, and I think the more concern, uh, as an department would be the winter sports, the Boys and Girls Basketball, Bowling, and Wrestling would be the only really sports that swimming is, I don't know, competing against for kids. Um, again, I don't know if that's going to be a reality or not, there's really no way to tell until when, if it happens, um. And I guess, I guess what it comes down to, though, is it, a student might have to pick bowling versus basketball if they were good at one or the other, and it's always going to be a choice, and it's going to be a matter of what they're really wanting to do, and what we encourage kids to do is to make choices. We did have two of our students who were both, um, I'll just, the two freshmen that were with us, both Ben and, they both played on the basketball team, and both played on the swim team, and managed to go to basketball all day during school, and they were able to, uh, in essence, make up their swimming on theirs and still compete, so that we had two kids that, that were both freshman participants in Letterman, that, that, I know there's a primary sport, a secondary sport, but we also feel that swimming is a way different sport, I mean, there are, when you come to these swim meets and don't take against any of the kids, there are, there are kids that are swimming and really close to competitive times, but there are also kids who have never jumped off a block before, and who have really pretty much never swam three or four laps, and I know we had some of those that came, and, um, there are some who stuck right out through it, who said, "You know what, I'm not going to swim my first meet, I just want to sit and watch and see how you kids do it." And then when they saw other teams, and the kids were as equal, who, I don't want to make this, they, they had a tough time getting from one end of the pool and all the way back, and. back, and, and the other kids on either team stood up and cheered them on when they finished. And then they said, wow, look, that kid was the same level as I was, they're not pro, they're not by any means going to go to state, but they hung in there.
So they stepped up.
And they stepped up. And I know we have a couple of kids here that weren't the best swimmers, but hung out with us all year and spoke to us and said, man, hopefully we could do it because I want to come back. And they talk about their personal best, and their personal best is one thing that they all strive for. I mean, it isn't their, the school record, but they all said, oh, I swam the backstroke getting the 59 seconds, you know?
They better each time.
And better each and every time. And they get out of the pool and they're cheering one another on and looking at the clock and saying, you did it, you made, you beat your time, and, and that's really, I mean, so you don't feel that, at least I don't feel that it's going to take away from other sports. There's our basketball players, and there's our football players, and there's our bowling and our, those winter sports. It's really going to open up the avenue for kids that really don't, aren't as athletic. This isn't, I mean, it's just, it's a lifelong, I'll call it a sport that you do, you, at any age, you can still swim. You know, it's one of those swimming, golf, and bowling that we do throughout our life. All of us have played football when we were younger, we sure do know it nowadays. As parents, we're not keeping our kids away from those sports, but, you know, the soccers of the games and the foot, and the, you know, those sports that are a little more or less impacted are stepping up now, so.
Andy, do you think you could maybe talk to the coaches and just see how they would be with, you know, flexibility with the swimmers that might also want to be on some of the other sports?
Sure.
Get their feelings?
Yep.
So Andy, just to be sure too, going forward, if you're a varsity basketball player, but you were a swimmer and swimming at the varsity level, you could possibly do both?
Yes, we have a two-sport contract we use from time to time throughout the year. That contract states the student athlete's primary sport, secondary sport. That contract lays that relationship out and makes the student athlete choose, when they're doing two sports in one season, which that, what that primary sport is. Both coaches have to agree with, they both sign the contract, the student athlete signs the contract, and her parent signs the contract, and I sign it. And we ask that, you know, we have that contract when we get in these situations, just so that everybody's on the same page. Because when we have two sports in one season, the main issue that always comes up is usually, you know, the coaches want the kid at the same time, and who gets preference, and...
So if there's a conflict on the day, the primary sport would give for that?
Yeah, as long as those coaches are, can work it out and communicate with the student athletes, then I have no, there's no problem with it on my end.
Just for our sake, Ben, can you find out which of the varsity, which coaches are willing to sign those contracts?
In the wintertime?
Yeah.
Sure. Obviously, we had boys basketball that did it, now it was...
So they did, they agreed to it last year?
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't, I don't think it was a varsity, wasn't a varsity basketball player, so it was a lower level. So I'll go back to the coaches and find out.
It's just been, no, as a, as a point, that's all.
Yeah, sure.
Not that that's going to make the end all be all for the board, but it's just another fact to consider.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have anything for...
Okay, next, uh...
Thank you very much. Some of the kids appreciate you letting us come. Hate to leave them, but...
We appreciate the dedication and coming in to speak with us. Okay, up next, of course, we have the superintendent's report.
First up is Karen Blackburn. She's going to make a presentation on special education and I U P A services. Karen is our special ed director and people personnel director, so Karen's got some information to give to us tonight. Thanks, Karen.
Thanks. So part of what I have to do today has to do with our special ed fiscal audit that we went through. Justin, was that a couple months ago? I don't know, I feel like it's been going on all year, but...
It's a better answer.
It has been. It's been dragged out a little bit. And so one of the requirements that we have to do is do I D A Part V, public participation. So as part of that, we have to talk a little bit about what's going on in special education, and then offer the public an opportunity for input into where they think we should spend our funds. So we did put a notice in the newspaper last week to allow people to come and participate in conversations, so there's a sign-in sheet. Anyone who's here, make sure you put your name on the sign-in sheet because I have to upload it for the state auditor. So I thought, since I was able to be here and in front of you guys, I'd let you know what's going on in all of people services and not just special ed, because there's been a lot going on over the last year. So I wanted to just start with the special ed piece and 504, look at all students with disabilities and kind of give you an idea of how many kids we're talking about. So there are 359 students that are on I E Ps, preschool through 12th grade, and you can see kind of the breakdown by which building they're in. And then there are an additional 88 students that are on 504s that have a disability that significantly impairs a major life function. So we have a lot going on, coming and going. We've talked a little bit about open enrollment before. 25 of the 359 students are open enrolled to us, and there are 24 of our kids that are open enrolled out. So it's almost a wash between what's coming in and what's going out. Regardless of where the students are placed, we have to meet with the schools for the agency and help in the writing of the I E P. So those 24 that are at E H O V, I have to go to those meetings at E H O V. The 28 that are placed out of district or at St. Mary's, I have to attend all of those meetings as well. And the same goes with the 504 kids. So I actually, this next list, was a little surprised at the numbers, and somebody else said something to me too. I thought it would be important to kind of, before we talk about programs breakdown, what disability category do our students have? And I made it others, so if there were very few kids, I didn't want it to be identifiable who we were talking about. But what stood out to me is we have 42 kids that are labeled with autism in our district. That's a pretty high number for me. You know, primarily, we're dealing with specific learning disability or other health impaired, but that autism number is pretty high up in the list of categories. There are 13 of these categories, and you can see those are the top four that we're dealing with in district. So that's kind of shifted a little bit, the services that we've been doing as that number continues to increase over time. All of these are in your folder, so you will be able to see, and they're sectioned off each other categories. This is the breakdown of the intervention specialists that we have by building, and also what we're using kind of at a district level. So we have two intervention specialists that are working at a district level. They're servicing multiple buildings, they're servicing kids that are on home instruction. We have two A P E teachers in the district now that also serve as P E teachers. We have an O T and a C O D A and a P T and a P T A, and then we have two S L Ps that are from Mercy, and then we have a transition coordinator. So those people typically work in multiple buildings. The services, and this is in your folder, so I won't go through each of those, but this is the breakdown by building, what services we offer our special education students. What we've tried to do is build a comprehensive program that if you start in a program in kindergarten, there's something for you when you move to Saylorway, or there's a similar program when you move to V H S. And we've tried very hard to look at the needs of kids to determine whether we need that program at that building level. Next year, we're a little low in our community-based classroom at Vermillion High School, but if we look at what's coming, we have high numbers coming up through the next two grade levels. So we're looking at ways to creatively use that teacher until those kids come up the year after next. Related service, these are all the related service, things that you might see in an I E P. And I think those are pretty typical. We do contract out our vision services as well. We only have one student, and so we have orientation and mobility and vision services that our service providers prefer. In your folder, I did include the details of each of those special programs, like what would be a reason a child would be in a special program, what kinds of things they do. So there's three or four pages in there for you related to that. Every year, we take a look at our programs, our staffing, and try and make some decisions about what makes sense. I have the conversation all the time, but it's needs first. Let's look at the needs of kids, decide what we need to occur there, and then we decide where the staffing and programs need to be. So that's the special ed portion, and this, I believe, is in the front of your folders. I just wanted, because my job was a title change from previously, all the kinds of things that now fall under what are called people services. And you see, there's a lot, and it's in a lot of areas. I kind of say I do a little bit of everything that's, any kind of at-risk kid, any kind of tier two or tier three starts to fall under me, so that gives you kind of an idea of what those are. This year, we've spent a lot of time, or I've spent a lot of time, Jim's spent a lot of time, working with our school counselors, and working on social-emotional instruction and mental health, and I think that's something that I came and talked to you guys about. I told the counselors I was coming because I said, I don't know that you guys often get to hear all the great things that they do, and they have worked hard this year, I mean, hard. We have spent quite a bit of time, and in your folder, you'll see some examples, putting together a comprehensive school counseling plan. So this was something that they've been wanting to do for years. It follows the American School Counselors Association recommendation, and it takes a look at our programs from pre-K through 12 and starts to align our curriculum so that we're not overlapping. And we're able then to look at where do we have holes and where are our needs so that we can better align the services for kids. So as it stands, that document right now is about a 70-page document that we've worked to put together, and we're still working to add some additional pieces. So in your folder, you'll have an example of a monthly calendar for each of the buildings and the activities that each of the building counselors are doing during that particular month. But they have laid out every single month and all the different things that they're doing with kids so that you can have a feel for the great things they've been working on. They do have three domains in their program, academic, college and career readiness, and social-emotional skills. So we're working very hard to make sure we embed each of those into the plan. They have increased their amount of direct instruction in social-emotional skills, so they're going either monthly or bi-weekly, pre-K through 7, in to see every kid. So every kid is getting social-emotional instruction either bi-weekly or monthly from a school counselor. They are in the process right now of redesigning their career advising plans and success plans, which is a huge component of what we've been doing. They are required career advising kindergarten through 12th grade, and success plans are six through 12. So we're getting common forms, common procedures, we're developing at-risk rubrics so that we can add those into our comprehensive plan, and whoever comes in knows what we're doing in Vermillion schools. And then we have been working on our crisis response and improving our referral services to the various agencies. So we are, we have been working on designing a resource pamphlet for all families and for our counselors so that we're sure that our families are getting the resources that they need. They came out, at the beginning of the year, we sat down and developed the department goals for our counseling department. I told them I wanted a social-emotional and college career readiness, and that they could pick the other two, and so they helped with the wording behind this. The social-emotional is to develop and maintain a comprehensive plan. It uses the castle wheel, and it now will be aligned with the social-emotional state standards. Their college career readiness plan, we're starting to put pieces in place for developing a K-12 comprehensive, developmentally appropriate career readiness plan. And then number three is something that the administrators are starting to tackle where we are providing access to a multi-tiered system of support. So we're going to be working on developing that plan as a group. Our goal is 80% of our time with kids, either providing direct or indirect service, and only 20% of our time for program planning and school support. So I've been asking the counselors every nine weeks to kind of give me a feel for what percentage we're at. We had talked about shuffling services and duties a little bit so we can get them in front of kids, and we're still working on making sure that that stays in line with where they want it to be in the ASCA model. So there's a lot of information in there about the school counseling plan. I am not tech savvy at all, but I came up with a tree, and Shawna did a great job of making it happen on technology. So our mission is to get our kids to be life-ready, and I wanted to kind of give you a feel for what we've put in place social-emotionally to best prepare our kids. So our school counselors and all of the supports that they provide are there in the center. We've been spending a lot of time training our general education teachers in trauma, to be trauma-informed and trauma-responsive, and to build and embed social-emotional skills in their curriculum. Our intervention specialists are working on specific behavior skills, executive functioning, they're building life skills. One of my community-based rooms now has a partnership with the hotel, and we take our kids and do job embedded skills at the hotel. So we have some that are going to the A P L. So they're getting in the community and embedding the skills right in what we're doing. Our school nurses have done a great job. We contracted with Mercy for those this school year. They're really looking at trauma, they're looking at addiction issues, they're able to identify any kids that have domestic violence, as well as some mental health concerns. So they're another frontline we often don't think about. Our secretaries, our maintenance staff, I say they are the very front lines because that's who our families see first. And so they work really good to build relationships and get to know our families. Some of the newer pieces on here are our school-based health center. I believe Bill's been talking to everybody about what that's going to look like. Physical health, dental health, behavioral health, and mental health services will be, and addiction services and identification will be built within that school-based health center. So we've been working with various agencies to say, who's the most appropriate, how much of that time can we have, so that we're providing what, in essence, are going to be free services, I believe, to the students and families in Vermillion. So I believe that's going to be open to the community at some point so that they can access those services as well. We also have posted for a community navigator and a college career readiness specialist, and you'll see those and their job duties listed up there. One of the things that you'll see in here, future plans for next year, is I don't want any of these different positions to be siloed. Oftentimes, we have kids that have multiple needs in multiple areas, and so we're looking to build a coordinated care team with some people like the community navigator, a school counselor, myself, someone from the school-based health center, maybe the school nurse that are going to sit down and be able to problem-solve the multi-tiered needs that these are, kids are coming with. And then what services do we need to get them in school and out of school to help them be more successful? So we've put a whole bunch kind of in place for social-emotional and mental health since I think I was here last. Preschool, we've talked a lot about preschool. I just wanted to update you. This year, we had 56 spots for preschoolers three through five. We did have a waiting list for our model peers this year, so there were some families who we did not have enough spaces for. And we don't like to put people on waiting lists or turn them away. We did have... We did have a half-time preschool teacher this year instead of a full-time, but she was employed full-time, so she was working intervention in first grade. So our intention for next year, for the 1920 school year, is to move her full-time preschool. That will give us up to 80 spots, so we can pick up those families that were on a wait list. It will also allow us to separate and make it a little more developmentally appropriate, 3-4 age group kids and 4-5 age group kids, so that we can target those specific developmental ranges a little bit better. We did have nine students that we serviced through itinerant services, meaning we went into their home or went into community preschools, and 28 to 32 of those kids out of that list were kids with disabilities. Some of the highlights, we just went through a site review. We are full compliance on licensure. We continue to be a five-star step-up-to-quality rating. We did focus on early literacy skills and bought preschool foundations, so our kids are getting foundations from the very smallest level and moving up through that curriculum as they go through the elementary school. We focus on a play-based model, and we have community partners. So the community partners are ones that come in and do presentations and allow us to go see their sites, and then they sign an agreement with our preschools. So those six partners are listed there. There's monthly parent involvement activities, and we just had a literacy night, a family literacy night. We need to do a better job advertising it, because we only got four families who came. But one of our big focuses this year was getting books in the hands of the kids. So we probably, we used our budget and, I would say, got about eight to 10 books in every kid's hand that they got to keep at home. So the more we can get books in their hands, the better they're going to be prepared for kindergarten. So that's been a focus of ours, is how do we get the kids and get those books in their hands?
Is there any way you could do donation or ask for donations?
I believe so, and I want to talk, actually, it's listed here, about something we're looking at doing for the future, and we don't have it all panned out yet, so. I talked about the first three, but the fourth bullet point is something that we're considering doing. We keep hearing that the kids are coming to us so far behind, and we're not hitting them birth to three, because that really isn't what we do. We hit them from three to five. And so one of the things we're considering doing is changing our model a bit. We're a five-day-a-week preschool. Many of the preschools around us are four-day-a-week preschools. We're looking at doing partnerships with Help Me Grow and the library to allow a birth to three on that Friday, so that we can start to get the kids in, immerse them in literacy from very young. They have the million-word count, and the more words we can get kids, the better they're going to be. So we're looking at how we can make that happen possibly for next year. We want to increase our home visits, of course, increase differentiation, and we want, we have a big target. We do surveys with the kindergarten teachers to say, "How are our kids prepared, and what do we need to do better moving from preschool to kindergarten?" So that is definitely our goal, to get them better prepared for kindergarten. Is there space for 80 kids? There is. How we're going, it won't be any other classrooms. Right now, we're running a community-based preschool, a morning and afternoon session, and then we've only been running an afternoon session in the other classroom. And so now, we're going to add a morning class, which will allow an additional 24, up to 24 kids. So that will allow us to differentiate the grades and allow more spots for kids. So the last couple slides, and you have this in here, so I won't read everything, but I wanted to give you an idea of all the things that this department has been working on, and some of them we introduced and have been in collaboration with lots of other people, and some of them I've put in front of you already. One of the big highlights, I think, for me is the school Medicaid program, and Justin, do you have any idea what we're looking at for an increase to the district out of that?
I don't have all the numbers. They kind of come in as quarterly blast numbers. I received, I think, were $78,000.
Yeah, so that was something we didn't have before, that because we, I submitted the application, we got approved for that, we've got everybody retrained, that's $78,000 that we're bringing back into the district for services for kids. So we've been doing quite a bit of work over the last, and this has just been the last year. Some of the future things that we're looking at for next year, that comprehensive career and readiness plan, we want to do family support meetings. Our new special education kids, kids are getting identified, and families don't know the process. We need to sit down with them and talk about the process. If they feel supported on the front end, it's going to make them know that we value their kids as we move through. Coordinated care meetings, I talked to you about. We want to continue to do that collaborative effort with social-emotional and our school-based health center. We're looking at that multi-tiered system of supports. We have an application that's being submitted, because the state support team has now finally bringing multi-tiered system of supports to our area. So we're going to be entering in a three-year cohort, where all the administrators will be involved, and some of our teaching staff, to develop that comprehensive plan of supports and services for kids and teachers. So that will be happening over the next three years. We're going to take a hard look at Title I probably next year. What are we doing with math, and is what we're doing in reading really being effective in improving kids? Adding social-emotional screener in grades 8 through 12. We're currently doing it in pre-K through 7. The teachers have liked what we've been getting. The counselors say it's been valuable. It's very time-consuming, because we did a paper pencil this year. So we might be changing which method we use, but we need to get it up into 8-12 for sure. And then, at the high school, we're going to be adding our problem-solving team, so that we can sit down and brainstorm what's going to help any of our kids who are at risk the best. So that is all in there. Everything is in your binder, and there's extra stuff for you to look at when you have time. And do you guys have any questions for me? It's a lot.
Appreciate it, Bill.
We just, yeah, let's just say, we really appreciate all, everything they've done, and all they're doing for the kids.
Absolutely. They've been working hard, for sure.
Nice job, Karen. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to add just a little bit to what she said, summarize it from a different point of view. That was a lot to take in, and this, that she prepared, you'll have to take it home and look at it and study it. If you have any questions, let us know. But that's one interesting thing about a small district, we don't have a lot of resources. And the bigger you are, in some ways, and I'm not complaining, I'm just stating the fact, the easier it is. So these things are all having to be done by a limited number of people on a staff like Karen. Next year, I think we're doing a good thing to bring Bonnie up to analyze some of this data. She mentioned that Title I math, are we successful in that area? And she alluded to the fact that maybe we're not as successful as we needed to be. Well, it's not that we don't know that, or it's not that we don't want to look at that, but with a limited number of people and all the things that you have to do in a school year, and you look at all the things that she prepared here, that's just a tremendous amount of work to do. And so we're using our resources as best as we can. One thing that I know is that you've got a talented group of people here. You've got some talented administrators. You've got Karen and Jim, and Lisa and Bonnie, and now Bonnie coming up to central office, and your principals. It all, it all starts there. One of the big things that she mentioned that was so critical in this was the parent piece of it, and parent participation, and the fact that, I think that that's going to be a great thing, and I can't overemphasize that enough, is at that preschool level where you're going to try to expose the young kids to words. The research shows that those kids that are exposed to those words, it's amazing the difference in the success that they have, the more words that they speak. And you know what's interesting about it, too, is they did a study, and I think it was through Harvard, or I, there's, there's multiple studies on this, but it showed that even kids that were from affluent families, that didn't use their words and didn't talk much to kids, scored significantly less, where they were significantly less successful through their whole academic career. So teaching our parents to use those words are going to be important and critical. So I give our team credit for looking at these things, along with the SEL. I think that our district's always been at the forefront of doing things before we were asked or made to do it, just like with the laptops, SEL is another one. So we're way ahead of the game here, and it's not a game, it's a fact. You have to just know that we've got a tougher population of kids coming in. We don't have a lot of staff, but the staff that we have are very talented, they're working really hard, and they're putting processes in place that are making us better. And you say once again, "Well, why wasn't the process there to begin with?" Well, it's not that easy with the number of people that you have. We found a group of people that now are working together as a team and making this better, and the process is in place. And I told the board that we'd be coming back to you with a strategic plan. This is part of it, part of the entire plan that we're putting together and the process that we're putting together. She mentioned that they have a 70-page document, and that the counselors have been working on it. You say, "Okay, well, why, how effective is a 70-page document?" I asked her that. I challenged them. I says, "Do you really need to have that much?" And the counselors and her agreed that you can't do it sometimes with less. You try to simplify these things, but as you start looking through this special ed, and all the things that we do in a school district are pretty complicated, there's a lot of, lot of things that you'd like to try to simplify, but you can't. With some of this, you have to have a process, and you have to have the information that you have, and you try to make it as simple as you can, and I can guarantee you that we are trying to do that, but the important thing is that we have a process, we have talented people that are working on this, and we told you that we'd come back with some strategic plans, and this is the beginning of it. We'll present you with some more academic things that we're doing as well. So, great job for all of you that worked on that, and we're continuing to work on that. So, lots of information, though. So when you get a chance, take a look at it. It's overwhelming, I know that at times, so.
I'd also like to add, too, that the $78,000 we've collected from the Medicaid, there's still work coming. We've essentially created ourselves as a Medicaid provider, and then with that, Karen and her staff have to create, you know, Medicaid bills, just much like a doctor's office, mail that back to the state of Ohio there and get reimbursed. So we're on pace to collect around $112,000 additional dollars this year that we wouldn't have had in the past, and again, it's, kudos and hats off to Karen and her team for being able to fill out that. It's a lot of information to keep track of and to fill out and send to the state for reimbursement there. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on my agenda, and this, they left, and they probably would have liked to hear some of the good things that sports do, but I wanted to read you something that came from a couple different sources about sports. We've got a lot of, lot of sports, and we've got a lot of supplementals, and I know sometimes we all get a little bit of anxiety as a board when we start looking at what we pay out for supplementals, because we do spend a lot of money on those things, but we also, once again, are always looking for money. And I think we've done a good job as a district over the years of trying to get creative, right-size our staff at all times, and not go back to the taxpayers to ask them for operating money, but at the same time, keep those supplementals that we have. So these supplementals, though, are critical to kids, and I'm sure the swim team would have loved to hear that, this information that I'm going to read to you about some of the things that sports do, but, and some of the things that we do in our programs. So let me just read this letter that came to you quickly. "Dear sir, I'm writing to say thank you for the opportunity to officiate your games this past weekend versus Mansfield, Madison. I was the IUC for the second game. I don't recall ever proactively writing a coach after officiating a contest. However, I am so incredibly impressed with your program, assistant coaches and student athletes. I feel like I don't have any other option. It's my opinion that negativity is the first and only thing that people recognize in our 24/7 news cycle. More so, the only feedback we ever receive is constructive and negative. This written communication could not be more of a polar opposite. That is, I have officiated every day this spring since opening day, except for three weather-related postponements, and I don't recall a more impressive group of individuals who clearly know, accept, and are committed to their roles as coaches and players. This is not to say that there are not other top-tiered programs in Ohio. I'm simply suggesting that based on what I observed on Saturday, your program is exceptional. In turn, I believe that a minimum such commitment and discipline should be recognized. Congratulations. I wish your program great success as the regular season conference schedule concludes and the 2019 postseason begins." So I'm not going to go on to read the rest of it, but it just is a testament to what we're doing in our sports programs. You can see that you have this group here trying to form another team, and it tells you some of the positive things that are going on with sports. Another letter that we just recently received showing you the value of sports is a letter from Jeremy Rady. "Good morning, Mr. Stillman. I wanted to drop a quick note on how impressed I was with one of the young men on the throwing team for track. I apologize as I only caught his first name. Lance was probably the true MVP of the meet. With weather and field conditions not cooperating as well as I would have liked, this young man took it upon himself not only to shag the disc for his teams, but for all of the teams in attendance. I can tell you from being out there in the field where water was often about an inch or more deep, he was a trooper, being out there with me constantly retrieving the discs for other schools. He was friendly as well. You should be proud of this young man representing Vermillion. He was truly a class act in the definition of sportsmanship. Thanks for having such a great coach and a group of kids." So once again, this is showing the value of sports and what's going on in the sports programs, and it's not just that we're teaching how to win championships here, we're trying to teach them the fundamentals of the game or how to win a game. There's much more going on in our programs, and the same thing with academics, too. There's a lot more to us than sometimes a test or anything like that. So, great job to hear those praises coming into the athletic department. Sometimes we all get a little bit critical of sports and say, "Why..." You see them on TV, and you see all of the things that maybe we overemphasize with sports, but I don't think you can underestimate the value sometimes of what they do bring for people and for kids, and give them options and opportunities. So, just wanted to point that out. Great job. The last item on my list, and I want to make sure, Andy, we decided you're coming next month, correct, and doing a presentation? You're not here tonight to present?
No.
All right, I want to just be sure that I didn't cross my statement sort of here. Okay, last item on my superintendent's report, and this is a tough subject to talk about, school safety. You know that I wrote a letter to the parents that went home on Monday, April 29th, and it was about a threat? And we had talked about this before that letter went home, as to what really constitute a threat that parents need to know about. And that still remains a difficult situation and a difficult decision. We don't want to withhold information from parents, but at the same time, we can't give so much information that is going to cause either law enforcement or our district liabilities. So there's a lot of things that we have to consider. So you know we sent that letter out, and we used the three phases of media that we could do it in the quickest fashion. One was Facebook, one was a telephone call, and the other one was email. So we used all three areas, and quite honestly, as you all know, when you start to get into social media, you put yourself up for criticism. And that's okay. We're going to continue to do what we know is right, and we're going to listen to the criticism, and honestly, some of the things on Facebook, we can't sift through all of those things. What I want to say tonight, though, is, and this What I want to say tonight though is, and this is the message that I'm sending to them, if you, if you as a parent are hearing about things at school that your kid is coming home and telling you, that you would have any doubt that there might be a problem, whether it's bullying, or whether it's drugs, or whether it's a threat, tell us. Our offices are open, our principals are listening, our counselors are listening, our teachers will listen. And I tell you that they'll come back and they'll tell the proper people in our district and it won't go unnoticed and it won't go without investigation. Anything that's happening these days, we have to make sure that we're following through and doing that. We all know that there was another school shooting. Every time one of these things happens, it heightens awareness. And I got to tell you that everyone in our school district, I don't care whether it's the elementary school or all the way up to the high school, how do you not be nervous in this situation? Everyone has this on our minds, no matter what, what the situation, because when you send your kids to our school, it's heartbreaking to see these things that are happening. So, my message is to parents and I hope that that gets through loud and clear and we're going to find other ways to get this message out though. Make sure, as we tell the kids, "If you see something, say something. If you hear something, say something." Don't keep it in as a parent. Don't keep it in as a kid. Even if you hear it secondhand, try to, try to think about the source, but say something. The worst that's going to happen is we're going to look into it and say, "You know what? We couldn't substantiate it, but at least, at least we looked at it." We want to be able to look into any situation there is and we want you to be able to send our kids to our schools without any problems. Can we ever guarantee that? No. But the more we talk about it and the more that we work at it, work at it, the better it's going to be. So, once again, that's the message to our parents tonight and I would just encourage you as our board members, you're out in the community talking to those parents. Don't ever think that they can't come to us, and I know you don't think that, but keep encouraging them to say, "Look, talk to us. Talk to a teacher, talk to a counselor, anyone you want to tell, tell us." And it'll get back to the principal of the school, or it'll get back to a counselor and the counselor will get back to us. Just tell an adult, make sure that you're letting us know what's going on and we'll investigate it and we will work hard to keep schools safe. The other thing then, the message tonight is, once again, to, in the same vein, bus safety. We've talked to our drivers about this. I'm going to talk to them again. We're going to remind them, but we want to keep these buses safe and we want to let kids know that this is a short ride to school. And we've told these kids that they have to behave on that bus. And I'm saying it out loud in front of the community again, that we're supporting our drivers not to tolerate anything that is making that job difficult for the bus driver to drive a bus. Kids cannot use and should not use profanity on the bus. They should not have their hands on each other or on anybody else. And if they do, we're telling the driver that they're going to have to give them a consequence for it because think of it as a parent, you cannot drive a car very easily with two or three kids in your car. Imagine trying to do this with 70 kids on a bus. It's a really tough job and we cannot continue to allow this to happen. And we've talked to our administrators about this and we're telling our administrators, "Let's make sure we're supporting our drivers." So, I'm saying that out loud in front of the community again. You're going to have to know, if you're going to send your kids on our bus, you better as parents be telling them they need to behave. Once again, will we investigate what happened? We know there's two sides to every story, but your kid needs to behave. It's a short ride, get to school, get on the bus and get here without incident because it's not too much to ask. So, I'm, oh, I'm, once again, just wanting to reiterate these main things because we're also getting at the end of school. And this is a tough time of year for all school districts because kids start to want to get ready for spring and you know that, and then eventually summer, and then that's, that's an issue. One last thing that we're going to be working on with the principals, I've been talking about it with our administrative team. There's a text line that you can get onto our website and it's a Safer Ohio, Safer O-H text line that you could, or an information line that you could get on. Quite honestly, it's not used very often. We haven't got one single person that's come back to us through that line.
It goes to the Department of Homeland Security, the Ohio.
And then it comes back to us.
And if it's vetted, it comes back to us. And Lisa and I met and there was, we've not received a report.
Yeah. Quite honestly, that's not cutting it. And so, we've asked Sean to look into a service that we can create ourself, that we can get a text to our administrators' phone lines and a email that if you have a report of something, it's coming to us instead of going through that way. And so, we're going to put together a presentation, have that ready and up and running for next school year. At this point, it's not, it's, we're not going to get it done in time. So, we'll have it ready for next year. So, look for that to come at the beginning of the next year and I think that that's going to be a valuable component for kids to have a way to tell, or parents to tell us a way that if they hear something, say it. And not maybe just, some people are not comfortable to pick up the phone. That's just a way that people communicate these days is through text or possibly emails. So, we're giving that out as a, as a possible option. Last thing, I know that people maybe want to have an update on what's going on with the spending of the money from the school levy sources. And we are, Justin has the money there in the account, but it didn't come in until February.
Correct. And also, when we received that, because we had a new levy and we had to pay our portion for the board of elections, so we received right around $120,000 for that first half, but $27,000 of it was the cost of that levy for the board of elections.
This is the school safety levy.
School safety levy, yeah. So, we have in our accounts right now approximately $120,000 earmarked directly for school safety and security. And then we'll be collecting the other half of that this, this July, August here.
So, what we have directly in the pipeline right now, we have installed the biometric readers, they're on the doors, they're getting, they're going to be activated soon. That will be up and running then for the next school year. These things have taken us a little bit longer than anticipated because it was a little bit more work than what the company was able to, it was more work than they thought that they'd be able to produce at the time they needed to. We've got the doors, when you open up the doors, the alarms that will go off in all three schools, they're on the doors. The stickers are here, we haven't put the stickers on yet, but we want to roll this out at a logical time. So, we're getting ready to shut schools down. We're going to, we're going to have a pilot over the summer where we're using it with everyone and then open up the school next year with those things in place. So, they're here. We've spent some of that money, not a whole lot of it towards that. The big item was the SRO officer. So, everyone wants to know, are we getting another officer? Yes. We met with Chief Hartung, actually not with Chief Hartung, but we met with his secretary and with Annie Hendricks from the, from the, from the mayor's office, looked at the financial aspect of what's going to be needed to be taken out of that account toward the SRO officer. This will be ready for next year then, and we'll have that officer in place and we'll work on all those details. So, sorry I'm talking so much tonight about so many different things, but it had to be said and I hope I didn't talk too fast, but once again, a lot of details about a lot of things and it's just a way to inform everyone about what's happening. And if you all have any questions about any of it, just call me and answer them. That's all I have then on my report for tonight. Oh, yeah. Not used to reading those. Now, I'm not going to do the role either. It's Justin. Let me know that I'm not supposed to be doing that. So, but I will read it. All right. Last item, a one-year additional duties contract for the 2018-19 contract year to the following. Leah Ennis, seventh grade, Chicago trip, overnight chaperone, level zero, step zero, step two.
I'll move.
Sergeant.
Any questions? Call it off.
Mr. Haverhill?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Stepp?
Yes.
Ms. Ennis?
I'm staying.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Motion approved for yays, one extension.
Phil, you said the biometric readers are on the doors at all schools now already, but they're not even running yet. We're not using them yet.
They're not. They're testing them. They're getting ready to go.
Planning that next year.
They're going to do it little by little. There's a lot, you have to change over the card. There's a whole lot of changing of the logistics of things, so we're, we're working at it though. They're, they're installed.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, Ms. Haverhill.
Okay. Uh, and B, treasurer's report.
Recommend a resolution to approve the financial report for April 30th, 2019.
I'll move. A second.
Okay. An attachment A here. Briefly, we'll just go over the fund balances here. Through the month of April, we received $23.15 million in general fund revenue compared to $23.35 last year and $22.85 in fiscal year 17. So, again, as we've been saying the last couple of months, our revenue's been pretty much in line with where it has been. The only caveat to this is I would say that our, our safety and security levy money is included here. So, even though we're down a little bit from where we were last year, it's actually a little more because $120,000 that was earmarked for, for safety and security there. But again, it's nothing to be concerned over. When we look at food service through the month of April, we've received just shy of $600,000 in food service compared to $519,000 last year and $571,000 in fiscal year 17. So, again, our food service revenue appears to be in line with previous years. And when we look at all funds through the month of April, we received $25 million in all funds compared to $25.2 million in fiscal year 18 and $25.3 million in fiscal year 17. So, again, our revenue's down just a little bit, but it's nothing to be awkward about. Now, we've gone through revenues, we'll take a look at our expenditures. Through the month of April, the district has expended $18.7 million in the general fund compared to $19.5 at the same time last year and $19.975 in fiscal year 17. So, again, our revenues are slightly lower than they were in years past, but we've made significant strides in reducing our expenditures by just over a million dollars in two years here, while providing the same amount of services. Looking at food service through the month of April, we've expended $556,000 in food service compared to $536,000 last year and $513,000 in the previous year. So, again, our spending is right in line with where it's been. Again, that number's going to keep going up a little bit because they leave salaries over there for some certain people, so that's a little bit higher than those three ones. Looking at all funds for expenditures through the month of April, we've expended $20.7 million from all funds compared to $21.3 million this time last year and $22.25 in fiscal year 17. So, again, our revenue's slightly lower in the years past, but not by much, but our expenditures have significantly decreased the last two years. And looking at cash, through the month of April, we have a total of $18.8 million in cash from in the general fund compared to $17.8 last year at this time and $16.8 in 17. Food service cash, through the month of April, we have a total of $337,000 in cash in the food service fund compared to $249,000 last year and $263,000 from the previous year. And again, that cash value being $337,000, although we're trying to decrease that over the $500 salary this year. We don't want to let that get too high. And lastly, we'll look at all cash. Through the month of April, we have a total of $22.2 million in cash from all funds compared to $21.2 million in fiscal year 18 and $20.4 million in fiscal year 17. On the investment side, through the month of April, we burn a total of $284,166.8 cents on interest compared to $177,198.6 cents in fiscal year 18. So, we made an additional $106,000 in interest this year compared to last year. Any questions?
Call it off.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Haverhill?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Stepp?
Yes.
Ms. Ennis?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0. Recommend a resolution that the board accept the following donations as listed.
I'll move.
A second.
Any questions? Like, again, we appreciate all the donations from the community. Call it off.
Ms. Ennis?
Yes.
Ms. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Haverhill?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0. Recommend a resolution to approve the enterprise agreement for internet access with spectrum for the bus garage at $59 a month. And that's going to be attachment B in your packet.
I'll move.
This is a little bit beyond me, so I'm going to relax Sean here.
Yeah. Currently, the, the district owns fiber from the high school to the bus garage, but it's currently routed through South Street Elementary School, Vermillion Elementary School, and then the bus garage. There's been a power issue at South Street. We've been powering the switch over there to get internet access to the bus garage for phones. So, this will give us an internet connection there and then from there, we'll VPN back to the elementary school just over the internet for their phones and internet access.
So, totally separate setup for over there now?
It will. Their phone lines, their phone lines will be the same. They'll still be filtered like they are on the school network. We looked at having the fiber rerouted and it's about $15,000. So, the $59 per month return on investment is...
Makes sense.
Yeah. Probably way past our time, so.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Stepp?
Yes.
Ms. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0. Recommend a resolution to approve the enterprise agreement for internet access with spectrum for the bus garage at $59 a month. And that's going to be attachment B in your packet.
I'll move.
This is a little bit beyond me, so I'm going to relax Sean here.
Yeah. Currently, the, the district owns fiber from the high school to the bus garage, but it's currently routed through South Street Elementary School, Vermillion Elementary School, and then the bus garage. There's been a power issue at South Street. We've been powering the switch over there to get internet access to the bus garage for phones. So, this will give us an internet connection there and then from there, we'll VPN back to the elementary school just over the internet for their phones and internet access.
So, totally separate setup for over there now?
It will. Their phone lines, their phone lines will be the same. They'll still be filtered like they are on the school network. We looked at having the fiber rerouted and it's about $15,000. So, the $59 per month return on investment is...
Makes sense.
Yeah. Probably way past our time, so.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Stepp?
Yes.
Ms. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Haverhill?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0.
Move and step again.
Chris? Five-year forecast presentation here. All right. So, the purpose of the five-year forecast, really, it's for three things. It's to engage the Board of Education and the community in long-range planning and discussions of financial issues facing the school district. Number two, it's to serve as a basis for determining the school district's ability to sign contracts associated with continued operations. And lastly, it's really to provide a method for the Department of Education and the Auditor of State's office to identify school districts with potential financial problems. In front of you, I laid out what the five-year forecast is. And so, to go through this, first, we'll start with the revenue side of things and this is going to be the local side of things. On your forecast, 1.010, 1.020, and 1.050, that is basically all of our local revenue. Local property tax revenues account for approximately 51.1% of the district's revenue and property values are just shy of where they were in 2008 for the housing market crash. Property tax collection rates were 7% higher than average in 2018 and 4.1% higher on delinquent collections. And in 2019, we're on historical pace. So, we're going to be pretty much average moving forward. That fiscal year last year seemed to be an anomaly with our tax collection there. And again, property tax revenue is increasing. On your forecast, 1.010, 1.020, and 1.050, that is basically all of our local revenue. Local property tax revenues account for approximately 51.1% of the district's revenue, and property values are just shy of where they were in 2008 before the housing market crash. Property tax collection rates were 7% higher than average in 2018 and 4.1% higher on delinquent collections. And in 2019, we're on historical pace. So we're gonna be pretty much average moving forward. That fiscal year last year seemed to be an anomaly with our tax collection there. And again, property tax revenue has increased by 0.87% in the last five years, and it's actually decreased by 1.5% in the last 10 years. When we take a look at this, it's easier to see when you chart your graphs out and your numbers there, but there's our total valuation per property. We're just shy of $455 million in assessed property value. In 2018, we had a reappraisal done by the county, and we're gonna have our next update in 2021. So two years from now, we might see a different trend than the trajectory that we're currently seeing now. So what does this mean when we look at our historical valuation per property and we take a look at our historical property tax collections? You know, we take a look here, property tax collections have remained equal to or below the 2012 averages. Seven years operating with the same revenue, really, from 2012, we really haven't gone above that $17.3 million mark in the last six years. The one in red there is the projection for fiscal year 19. We're just shy at 17.238. We weren't quite collecting the same amount of revenue we were back in 2009, 10, and 11. Moving on from the local side, now we're gonna start looking at the state side, where we collect our revenue from. Those are gonna be lines 1.035 through 1.045 on your five-year forecast there. That's gonna be called your restricted and your unrestricted grants and aids. You know, your restricted funds, what that means is it can only be spent on certain things, so that's gonna be your catastrophic cost reimbursement, which we just filed. It's gonna be your economic disadvantage funding and your career tech funding. When you look at the unrestricted, that's typically, again, what we see in our state foundation payments. These funds are received through the state foundation program with absolutely no restrictions. We can spend this money however we want to. Currently, we receive 19.2% of revenue from this source, and we're also currently on the guaranteed funding foundation. Now, what that means is the guaranteed districts prevent foundation funding from collecting less revenue than they did in years past. So it's a good thing that we're on the guarantee. What that means is even if we were to lose students, we're still gonna collect the same amount of money equal to than what we collected the year before. And just to give you an idea, the amount of money, it's actually called the transitional yield, is what it's called. That line that affords in our foundation funding is $458,000 a year. And I anticipate that number, that guaranteed number, is only gonna keep growing. The other part of the foundation is the state share index. This is used to determine the district's capacity to raise local revenue when distributing state funds. And the basis for this calculation is the district's three-year average property value, median income and wealth index. So our valuation per pupil is gonna go higher. And what happens with a higher valuation per pupil, the state, based on the way the current funding formula works, determines that you're a wealthier district. And so when they determine that you're a wealthier district, they're going to give you less money every year, which is why that guarantee is so important. It keeps us from losing any money. And throughout the forecast here, the five-year forecast, there's gonna be a couple of buy-in budgets in there. There could be legislation. There's talk currently amongst legislators about finding a new formula that gets school districts off the guarantee and off the cap also, because there's another side to it. School districts earn too much, so they take it down. So again, what that means for us, if we were to be removed from the guarantee and without receiving additional state funding, that would be a cost of, you know, $450,000 a year. It's significant. And then fiscal year 19, we received 26.9% of the opportunity grant, which is the basis of our funding formula, which equals 16.24 per student. And in fiscal year 17, state share index was, you can see, it was higher. And again, that was because, again, with our declining enrollment, you're gonna see that number, state share index, as long as they keep that in the formula, keep declining, which is then going to reduce the number of dollars we receive per student, which again is why that guarantee is so important. But as of right now, I just had new projections come out with DeWine's new funding formula there, and it looks like, again, these are all preliminary numbers, nothing set in stone yet, but it looks like we will be receiving a little additional funding from the state based on DeWine's new formula there. This just shows you, I guess, the impact of being on the guarantee and what this means. Under the formula ADM, we did a regression analysis, basically, for the number of students that we anticipate being in the school district in these years. And as you can see, the state share index each year starts to drop a little bit and then starts to go up a little bit into base core valuation. But ultimately, looking at the bottom there, what that means is that would be the number of students, the very, very bottom number, that 307.20 and that 583.57, that would have to be the number of new students, not open enrollment students, but new students, new families moving into Vermillion local schools to get us off the guarantee. So based on these numbers here, we are not getting off the guarantee anytime soon. Lastly, on your five-year forecast, there's the revenue side of things. 1.060, it's gonna be all operating, all other operating revenues. It's 8% of the district's revenue. Again, this is gonna be things like tuition, transportation, interest on investments, and our Medicaid reimbursements that Karen was speaking about. Just going over some of these things, tuition from other school districts and students attend our schools as well as are from open enrollment. In open enrollment alone, we collect just over $1 million. And the fact that we're collecting an additional $1 million on these students and we're not adding any really additional expenditures along with these students, we're taking a look at, you know, how many seats do we have open in the classroom? And we're trying to fill those the right way with open enrollment without incurring any additional costs or hiring of additional staff. So open enrollment, the way we're currently utilizing it is very much helping the bottom line of the district here. This is the historical and forecasted revenue. This is gonna be all of our revenues. Again, in 2014, 15, 16, and 17, and 18, actually, those are years that we significantly saw increases in when we started really implementing the open enrollment policy and really bringing in more and more students. 2018, I'd say we reached our maximum capacity for the number of students that we're able to bring into the district without incurring additional expenditures. And we're gonna keep that plateau kind of where it is. And when we look at our forecast, those are the numbers in red. Again, a lot of those decreases that you're seeing are just, again, from a little bit less in property tax collection, but we stayed fairly consistent around that $24, $23.9 million mark throughout the forecasted period for our total revenues collected. Now that we went through revenue, we're gonna look on the expenditure side of things. So the largest expenditure for any school district is always gonna be personnel services. It's gonna be 3.010 on your forecast. This is 49% of our total expenditures. And personnel services remain fairly flat despite negotiated increases and taking in open enrollment students. Show that here. We're actually... We're projected to end this year at $11.4 million, which is, again, right in line with where we were in 2014, almost. So we've done a lot of, as Phil said, rate sizing, staffing when we need to, based on the number of students that we have coming in. And again, as we go through the forecasted portion of that, things become exponentially more expensive. 67% of our staff is on the step schedule, which means every year, it's gonna cost the district a little bit more to employ them. And that's reflected in the forecast. Looking at employee benefits, 19.1% of our budget is dedicated to employee benefits and 18.1%, or we're forecasting to increase 18.1% over the next five years. You know, this year, we received a 5% increase in our health insurance costs from fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 20. Some of the things we do to offset these employee benefit costs are through workers' compensation. We do receive discounts on workers' compensation because, A, we're a drug-free campus; B, we receive a discount for going green; and C, we also receive a discount for going five years of old without a leave payment, which I pay that monthly. Thank you. Give you all, it's 1% off. But again, here, you can take a look at the stuff in blue is where we've been years past. Those numbers reflect our personnel service costs, at least the charts do. And then again, the red is the increase. Those are increasing 5% each year based on what we've historically seen our insurance costs go to. Another one of our big line items here is purchase services. It's line 3.030 on your forecast. It accounts for 18.1% of the district's expenditures. This is stuff like tuition paid to external providers, you know, your tuition expenses for scholarships, community schools, and open enrollment. I have some updated numbers here that aren't 100% complete yet until the fiscal year 19 is, but I'll give it to you here. And I'll just do a comparison. The district paid out $636,000 in fiscal year 18 for open enrollment. This year, we're looking right around $620,000 for expenses out for open enrollment. Last year, we spent $214,000 in community school transfers. This year, the number's up. It's gonna be around $246,000 in community school transfers. And scholarship transfers last year were $175,000. Again, these numbers are up a little bit. We're looking at around $235,000 in scholarship transfers. I don't have the ESC costs yet this year. Last year, all in all, we spent $1.2 million in students leaving our district. And this year, so far, projections are looking like $1.1 million, but that does not include anything from the ESC just yet. So all in all, the big picture of things, we're pretty much in line with where we were last year. We're still looking around the $1.2 million mark of students that are gonna be leaving the district.
What's the difference between open and rollout and community school transfer? What's community school transfer?
It's the same number. It's just a different school type, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
Either way, it's students going out.
All those are students going out.
Okay.
Yeah, and just different classifications on the state foundation payment report. And again, though, like I said, we bring in about $1 million, a little bit more with open enrollment coming in. So we do our best to try and wash that as best we can without increasing any additional expenditures. And that's why we're seeing that. That's why that $1 million is important. Looking at purchase services historically, you know, we're not forecasting over the next five years to do anything significant. Basically, we're just increasing that amount. What we're anticipating that buy-in budget is gonna be for the foundation payment for the students and then those costs going down. So again, purchase services are always things that we purchase that we can't provide here. So some of the things that Karen was speaking about, we use as purchase services. We assume their salaries are gonna go up next year, and as such, our costs are gonna go up a little bit. Line 6.10, revenues over expenditures. Out of all the lines in the forecast, this is the most important line. And this gets a good sense of the school district's fiscal health. A positive number indicates the school district is spending within its means. And a negative number indicates that the district's expenditures exceed the revenue for that fiscal year, resulting in a reduction to any surplus the district holds. Now, as administrators, you know, this is our focus every year. I mean, we're... Every decision we make is to ensure our students are receiving a proper education and getting the most that we can out of our available resources. And, you know, it's our job as administrators to provide that type of service and that type of culture for students, but also looking at this, making sure that we can provide those things is the best, the best that we can. So historically, we'll take a look here. 2013, we were able to have our revenues over our expenditures. We're looking to have the blue line over the red line. In fiscal year 14, we pretty much broke even. In fiscal year 15, we spent a whole lot more than we brought in in revenue, but I believe that was the year that you were moving. That's when we built the board office extension. So we dipped into our savings a little bit to cover those costs. After that year, we made some significant reductions to bring our expenditures back in line, or back, I should say, below our revenue. Fiscal year 17, again, same thing. We came close, but we spent less than we brought in. Fiscal year 18 and fiscal year 19 both were... We gotta spend less than we bring in in revenue. But again, we can only curb these expenditures for so long. Eventually, that number's gonna overtake our revenue. It's just a matter of what we can do as administrators to push that number out as far as we can each year. This is just a quick snapshot of our forecast. If you look on the revenue side, under 2022 and 2023, you see $21.8 million and $19.7 million. Don't freak out at that. That just doesn't include our renewals. So the numbers down below, that 10.050 and 10.497, that does include our renewal levy in 2021. And our, just so you know, our renewal is on line 1.010 of your forecast. For some reason, the way they have this set up, any renewal actually goes to the bottom of the thing and not at the top. But our renewal is right around $2 million. So those numbers that you're seeing from beginning and ending cash, well, beginning cash balance and end fund balance, those are included with the renewal levy passing, the assumption that the levy will pass. Final comments. You know, the district, we're in good financial health. But as I say every year and every time we do this, we're gonna really need to watch our spending carefully so we can mirror revenue. We know for certain our costs are going to always rise, and it's gonna be our job to find additional ways to reduce expenditures, increase revenue, or do a combination of both. So all I have. Any questions?
I think you're doing a great job, Justin, in learning things tight and...
Thank you.
And making it understandable. Yes.
Yeah.
I appreciate you.
I'll be accused of stealing at like last night.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the work I'm in.
I just like to kind of, I think, I can't ever remember, it's been a long time, you know, because of the way Phil and you and Justin and previous treasurers have worked together to kind of streamline things and, I guess, do what's best for the community without having to go after them and ask for more money. We've done a long time. You've done a great job.
This does need to be voted on now. This does need to be the board's approved five-year forecast, so we are gonna have to vote on this.
I'll second.
Any additional questions?
All right. Call it off.
Ms. Ennis.
Yes.
Mr. Stark.
Yes.
Mr. Havenhill.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
Ms. Stepp.
Yes.
Motion approved five zero.
Anything else? Three, we need the executive. Recommend a resolution to move in the executive session for the purpose of the following appointment. Employment dismissal, split promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employees for the investigation of charges or complaints against an employee or student, unless an employee, official, or student requests a public hearing.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
937, 137. Item nine, items for discussion. Do we have anything?
Only thing I wanted to ask, Phil, did you ever find out any information on the Special Olympics? I see we have all those donations.
Yes, it's on my list, and I'm sorry, Shelley, that I didn't get it.
That's okay.
I'll get there first thing tomorrow.
And I'll be honest, too, with how close we're cutting it with maintenance of effort. So every year, we have to spend equal to what we spent the previous year, three-year average in special education. And if we don't spend it, we still have to cut a check for the difference to Columbus, which makes things difficult when you're moving things around. So, you know, I won't know where we're going to finish on our maintenance of effort until the year ends or until at least all the POs are in, and I can, you know, forecast out salaries and stuff. But any money that we have, we can allocate towards special education and then put in there. It does help. I know it sounds ridiculous to have to spend money to not have...
Could that be used for something like this?
I think it could.
Okay.
That's what I was saying, and it might be in our best interest to maybe help out there.
Okay, that's a great thing for those kids.
I'll just, there's nobody left, but, you know, the, just recognition for the people that put on the prom and the prom to dawn. I just worked prom to dawn, I didn't help organize anything, but, man, the people that do that and the time and effort that's put into it is pretty amazing. It's a, both were, both, I wasn't at the prom, but it sounds like it was a great event, and the prom to dawn was really cool. The kids had a great time.
Yeah, I wish I would have said something about it tonight in my report. The year...
It was great work, yeah. And the amount of work, I think, that goes into it, for the few parents that do all the Shelley you've done before, but all the fundraising and the, it's, man, I wouldn't, couldn't do what they do. That's great stuff. That's it.
Okay. Item 10, consent agenda. The superintendent and treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Actions by the Board of Education in the adoption of a consent agenda means that all items are adopted in one single motion unless a member of the Board, the treasurer, the superintendent request. Any such items be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately. Number one, meetings, minutes of the April 15, 2019 board meeting, attachment C. Number two, approve the 2019, 2020 salary schedule for the administrator's handbook, attachment D. Number three, approve the following employment actions. Letter of resignation from Susan Wells, educational aide, effective June 6, 2019. Number four, one-year additional duties contract for the 2018, 2019 contract year to the following as listed. Number five, one-year supplemental contract for the 2019, 2020 contract year to the following: Jason Sokol, VHS head girls' basketball coach, Level 43, Step 0. Number six, one-year contract in the following for the summer of 2019 extended school year as listed. Number seven, one-year limited contract to the position of classified substitute for the 2018, 2019 contract year to the following: Jason Sokol, VHS head girls' basketball coach, Level 43, Step 0. Number eight, one-year administrator's contract for the 2019, 2020 year to Andrew Stillman, Director of Athletics, Classification 6, Step 0, $76,471. Are there any things that need to be removed from the consent agenda? I'd like to pull out number two, the salary schedule.
Pull that out?
I can't vote. I'm going to have to abstain.
Oh, I thought you meant pull it out of the consent agenda.
Yeah, he's going to pull it out because he can't vote on it.
Because he can't vote separately.
Yeah.
Got you, Josh Roy. I'm sorry.
Anything else? Okay.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Questions or comments?
Just comment, a great choice on Jason Sokol. Do a great job.
Sounds like he's got a good staff that's got it, too.
I was going to say, he'll build that program.
He's a bad coach, and much is good.
Really, he'll build that program back up, yeah. Be great.
All right.
Ms. Stapp?
Yes.
Mrs. Is?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Abstaining.
Okay. Public participation. I want to think who's on.
Sean?
I'm good.
Number 11, date and locations of upcoming board meetings. Located at Vermillion High School, 1250 Sanford Street, Vermillion, unless noted otherwise. Regular meeting, Monday, June 17, 2019, 7:00 p.m. That's a date change. Regular meeting, Monday, July 8, 2019, 7:00 p.m. Regular meeting, Monday, August 12, 2019, 7:00 p.m. Any problems right now with the dates? Okay. Okay, moving on. 13, recommend a resolution to move in the executive session for the purpose of following: Number one, employment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employees for the investigation of charges or complaints against an employee or student unless the employee or official or student requests a public hearing. And number two, prepare for conducting or reviewing negotiations or targeted sessions with employees.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right.
Yes.
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 All right.
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 Yes.
All right.